Hey y'all, I'm Dan Hamilton, Marine Corps veteran and host of the Next Gen Warrior Show. As always, the Next Gen Warrior Show is brought to you by Chairman George P. Bush and our dedicated staff at the Texas Veterans Land Board. Almost every Monday, we are proud to bring you the achievements and the success stories of veterans after the military. Joining me today is Danny Campbell. He is Position 6, City Councilman in Mount Bellevue. And Danny, I'm excited to jump into how you use your benefits after the military, the lessons that you have learned in business after the military. And I'm excited to be able to use those lessons for veterans who might be struggling, veterans who may be looking to find what they want to do after the military, because you have some really tremendous experience in a myriad of different industries. So, thank you for being here today. How are you?
Hey Dan, doing great. Thanks for having me on the show today. Really appreciate this opportunity to talk through some of my small successes and hope they hit the mark with some of the veteran audience out there.
Absolutely. So, one thing that was very critical, very critical, is foundational in my transition out of the military was the GI Bill. And I moved here to Austin, Texas. I moved here in 2012 after a deployment to Afghanistan. Totally new city, knew a couple of people here. But the GI Bill in my time at Austin Community College and then at the University of Texas, sent me on a totally different trajectory than would have been possible if I had not gone to school and not used my benefits. I know you also had kind of a similar view of using your benefits. Can you talk about the importance of that to you and how you kind of weave that into your military career as well as after the service?
Yeah, absolutely. So, my military career started actually after my college experience, after my undergrad experience. And I had a loan repayment program that the Army that I used to pay for Texas A&amp;M. And then, once I was in the military, I actually got a bachelor's. Finished my bachelor's while I was in, using my benefits through American Military University. And then in 2000, I believe it was 2010, I started my master's program at Norwich. And Norwich University is a military school, very military friendly. And I finally finished that master's program in 2016. And I just didn't have enough school. And so, I started an MBA program through the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill. And from 2016 to 2018, I completed that program. And so, it was all paid for by either loan repayment, you know, with Texas A&amp;M, or using the GI Bill once I got out. And so, I would say that I maximized the benefits that I had available. And that's one of the things that I think has really made a huge difference for me is that using those benefits that are available to us as opposed to just letting them go by the wayside and never be used.
Yeah. So, can you talk to us about your mindset going into the military? Because I was an enlisted guy. I think I went to, I graduated in, obviously, I guess in like April of 2005. And about three weeks later, or maybe four to five weeks later, I was in boot camp. So, I'm 18 years old, no college experience. All I knew, 18-year-old Dan, was that I was gonna get, I'm from Katy, Texas, that I was gonna get out of town and I was gonna go try to prove myself to me. And beyond that perspective, at that age, there was no, I would say there was no foresight other than I wanted to deploy, I want to be in the Marine Corps. But I didn't know what I wanted to do five, 10 years down the road. All that I thought was I'll maybe do a deployment and then I'll see where I stand from there. What was your thought process when you went into the Army? And did you see or were you able to see, okay, I'm gonna do my military career and then I'm gonna try to progress into business and life after that? Or did you stop, did your forethought stop at just joining the Army?
Yeah. So, my military career started after my time at A&amp;M. However, what got me interested in even joining the military to begin with was actually 9/11. The day after 9/11, I actually started my packet to go to Annapolis and to go to the Naval Academy. And so, I went through that process when I was a senior in high school. So, that was September of senior year of high school. Started my packet and got everything together. And I did not get the recommendation from my congressional rep. And so, at that time, that plan was now out the window. But I obviously had wanted to go into the military. So, I went to A&amp;M, which is a very military-friendly school. And in 2006, there was still an urge, a pull to be a part of the military, to serve. And so, in 2006, I actually went into the delayed entry program. And I think that was in July of 2006. And then in June of 2007, I actually left for basic training. And I had done really well on my ASVAB. And they said, you can pick whatever job you want to do, whatever MOS you want. So, I chose Military Intelligence, which is the oxymoron of every MOS. And so, I went into that enlisted. And so, my initial time in the military was actually spent a couple of years on the enlisted side. But when I went in, I didn't have a thought of, I'm gonna go into this industry, I'm gonna go into this career path. I went in thinking I may retire doing this. And then, life gets in the way of your plans. And I met, you know, reconnected with my wife, or who would eventually be my wife. And we had a son and decided that one deployment was enough. And so, that kind of changed the course of my time within the military. So, it wasn't a, there was not a thought of, I'm gonna go into new construction, I'm gonna go into residential home building after the military. It was just a, I'm sure we'll talk about that more in depth in a little bit. But yeah, there wasn't really a plan to do that at all when I first went in.
Interesting. No, I think that's what I was wondering too. Because I think our plans sometimes before the military, and then, you know, I also counsel veterans as they get out your life after the military sometimes looks different than when you were in the military and you were planning it. And I think you certainly illustrated that fact very well. But I want to talk about the deployment that you went on. Because you were deployed to Iraq when your wife had your kid. And you actually had, you came home for the birth, is that correct? Tell me about the emotions of those two weeks home. And I'm a Marine, so we didn't, y'all's deployments, I believe, were a little bit longer. You had a little bit of R&amp;R in the middle. And one thing that I was never jealous of that, because I always thought how hard it would be to come home after six months, spend time with family. In your circumstances, to see your newborn boy and then have to put it back on. Tell us about what that experience was like for you.
Yeah. Yeah. So, our son, he's nine years old now. So, it's been a while since I was in Iraq. But he was due on March 29th of 2011. So, anyway, I come back home and I come back on the 20th of March. And I had not driven a vehicle in quite a long time. I was in the TC seat whenever we were in Iraq. So, and we're, you know, we're in MRAPs and so, it's large vehicles, we don't go very fast. But I came back home, my wife is obviously nine months pregnant. And at about 1:00 in the morning, she wakes up and wakes me up. And she's prepped everything and she says, okay, it's time to go. And I hadn't driven in six months. And on the way to the hospital, I think I was going about 50 miles an hour. And she said, you can speed up.
She could tell you to move a little bit quicker, huh?
Yeah. So, anyway, so, but that experience, I mean, obviously, our first child, very moving, very emotional. I'd been gone for six months up to that point. And so, just very exciting. And it was a great two-week period that I got to spend with her and with him and at least get to know him a little bit before I had to go back. But, and there's pictures of me at the airport whenever I'm about to head back overseas. And I'm holding, you know, my 14-day-old son. And then, I know it's not gonna be another six months until I see him again. So, that was difficult. But you also know that you're going overseas for a mission, for a purpose. And so, I think that really helped me. And I'll say this too, I think that sometimes it's probably, some people may disagree, but I think it's almost easier for those who are deploying than for those who are staying behind. Because we are deployed, we know what we're doing, we know what's happening while we're overseas. But our loved ones that are back home, they don't have the same luxury of knowing exactly what's happening. And they have the luxury of worrying night and day over our safety. So, for me, it was going back to do my job, knowing that I would come back home in, you know, in six months or so. And then, I got to come back home in, it was August 23rd of 2011 is actually when I came back home.
I'm glad you brought up two different things. Certainly, the impact and the importance of the military family for those who are forward-deployed is a really critical asset for our soldiers, sailors, airmen, Marines. And the second thing, on a lighter note, is I can absolutely remember what it felt like to drive my little Honda Accord after I got back from Iraq. And I was used to driving around in this, you know, 60,000-pound vehicle, whatever an MRAP is, right? And you get in the car and it feels like a little race car and you're really loaded the ground. And remember how easy it was to drive it, like it was just so comfortable being in there? A totally foreign experience that I had totally forgotten about until you talked about the first time driving was driving your wife to the hospital to give birth. That's just really funny.
Yeah. Yeah. It was a funny experience. We can always think back to whenever I drove to the hospital. And it's laughing matter now, but at the time, it was not funny.
So, you come back and your thought process at that point is what? Is it, I'm gonna continue this? Or I'm gonna reassess what I'm doing? Because getting out of the military, especially, it can be a very difficult thing culturally to adapt to the lifestyles and customs of an office or to a business. It's a totally different thing to adapt to life after you've come back from a deployment after six months. So, what was your transition, not just out of the military, but from a combat zone back to life like for you?
Yeah. So, like I said, I came back August of 2011. And my date, or I guess, you know, whenever I could get out of the military was in June of 2012. And so, I had about eight months, eight or nine months to come back from deployment, kind of get my bearings after deployment and then work my way to be successful in the civilian sector. But in terms of coming back and adapting from being deployed to being back stateside, that was difficult. And it was difficult in the sense that when you're overseas, and you understand this, when you're overseas, you're, everything is heightened. You're always on your guard, you're always heightened sense of security. You look at everything differently, you look at everything suspiciously. And so, when you come back, there was a desire to not go to places that are filled with people. There was a desire not to go to places like Walmart, places like grocery stores, things that are that small. But the great thing was, is that dissipated over time. And I think that that's, there's not a normal, but for me, that was normal. For me, it took some time to just get back to what normalcy was stateside. As far as transitioning out of the military, I had a really good experience with the entire out-processing transition time. Because the unit that I belong to, they gave me the time to go to resume-writing classes and to meet with employers and to talk with headhunting firms. Like, and I won't name names, but some of those military transitioning firms that help you transition from military to civilian sector, they gave me a lot of those resources. And I took advantage of the resources that were there. I worked with, I was stationed at Fort Hood and I worked with the in-force, I can't think of the full name of it, but you probably know what I'm talking about.
Yeah. 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 I know that name is, it's like halfway in my mind right now as you're saying it.
Yeah. And so, anyway, they gave me an upper hand, I would say. But it was up to me to take the resources and use the resources that were there. And so, that really helped me in transitioning. And then, but when I transitioned, I didn't necessarily want to go into new construction or residential home building or anything like that. I wanted to, I wanted to have a job. I wanted to be productive and provide for my family, which I think a lot of, you know, former military, that's what they want to do. They don't necessarily know what they want to go into. But I used one of those headhunting firms. And there's probably a better term, because they're not truly headhunting firms. But I used their resources and I got hired by a company that was very military-friendly. The hiring, the VP of Operations was actually a former officer in the Army. He was armor, I was infantry. I won't hold that against him.
You cause a little tension in the workplace there, huh?
As long as I didn't say, you know, follow me, because he was like three levels above me. But no, but no. So, that helped a lot. And, but again, it was just using the resources that were there for me to use.
So, when you did find yourself in residential construction and you've been working for a few months, maybe a year, two or three years after you took off the uniform, what was your kind of level of satisfaction with your job? How did you adapt to that? And then, kind of what were you looking to do after that? Because I know when we talked, you talked about an interest in running for office. I know that you opened up a CrossFit gym in 2017. Currently, you're extremely active in your community on different boards. And so, how did you go from that one job where you're working residential construction to pursuing many different, almost paths in your career after the service?
So, I have to be very honest. So, the first year that I was out of the military, I went back to the recruiters and I talked to the recruiters about getting back into the service. Because, and I don't know if this is how you felt or if other veterans feel this way, but when I got out of the military, the military, it meant a lot to me. And it meant a lot to me to belong to something like that, that type of fraternity. And it's very difficult to fill that void, to fill that hole with a job. So, I did, I went back to the recruiters, I talked to them one time. And I didn't do it again. But I felt like I had to at least explore that one more time. Even though I knew what my family and I had decided, it was just something that I wanted to go and just make sure that that chapter was officially closed. With that being said, being a project manager with a construction, new home construction company, on paper, I was the perfect candidate for it. I checked all the boxes, I was a leader within my unit operations-wise. But the role was not fulfilling. But I belonged to a really good company that allowed me to branch out from the role that I had. And I got to, I went into sales. And so, I went from the construction side to the sales side. And I was very successful on the sales side. And then, since then, I've been able to promote and promote with different companies. And so, that kind of brings me to where I am today. And I'm a, you know, general sales manager for, I think, the third-largest builder in the nation. And I really enjoy my job. And a lot of that is stemming from when opportunities came up over the years. I took those opportunities. I didn't, I can look back and say that there wasn't a single opportunity within the private sector that I didn't take. So, I took every opportunity that was presented to me. And I think that's really helped me.
Yeah. I'm glad you bring that up. Because that, we, on this program, we often talk about that concept of opportunities. What does opportunity look like after the military? And there's, to me, there's kind of two parts to it. There's a part where the opportunity comes up and is presented to you. But the thing that I think veterans need to hear, and I think the entire professional community needs to know, is that you have to put yourself in a place for the opportunities to show up. So, what were you doing in order to present yourself as somebody who would excel in your career field?
Yeah, absolutely. So, it would probably be threefold. This is not a tried and true, you know, you do these three things and you're gonna be successful. But I had good mentors throughout my career so far. I've had various mentors throughout my career. But I attached myself to these people that I looked up to, that were good leaders and could guide me in the right direction. But also, you and I talked about this previously, education. I had benefits that were there to be used. And I felt like if I want to make sure that I'm the best possible candidate on paper to give myself the best, to give myself the most upper hand in getting a position or getting a promotion, then I need to have, my resume needs to reflect that. And so, that's why I, you know, finished my degree. That's why I got my first masters. And that's why, that's really why I got my MBA. I felt like the MBA would put me over the top if I'm being compared to another potential candidate. And so, you couple that with the experience that I've gained, plus the education. But it took a lot of sacrifice. I mean, from 2016 to 2018, I was always in class. I was, you know, it was fairly rough. Because you have your normal nine-to-five job, you get your classes. And at that point, my wife and I, we have two boys now. And so, that was difficult to maneuver through all of that. So, I would say, yeah, it was taking advantage of the opportunities and having good mentors, using my educational resources that were there and actually going back to school. I think those were the biggest things.
So, let me pivot here. What is the day in the life of a city council member look like?
Okay. Well, I won't give you the day in the life of one of our retired city council members. I will give you the day in the life of me. So, currently, this is what my day looks like. So, I know this is not really an answer to your question, but I'm gonna say this anyway. So, I run an outdoor boot camp in the early morning. You know, I guess I'm just used to waking up early and...
You know what? You want to know something real quick? I'm sorry to cut you off, but I still can't master the getting up early thing. I think if I had been better at getting up in the morning, like my dad, who can get up at like 4:00 or 5:00 in the morning and go work, do what you do, I think maybe I would have stayed in the Marine Corps for 20 years. But I still can't do it, Danny. Like, I can't. By 7:00 or 8:00, I'm good, I'm like warming up. But by 4:00 or 5:00 in the afternoon, usually is when I start hitting on all cylinders. But I digress, I didn't mean to cut you off there, but I'm still trying to learn that trait. So, if there's some magic, you know, magic potion or something that you're doing to get yourself out of bed, to throw weights around at 5:00 or 6:00, please let me know.
I wish there was a magic potion. What I've realized is that, so, I run a boot camp in the morning. But on days that I don't run the boot camp, I do not wake up at 3:45 in the morning.
Alright, I feel a little better now. I feel a little better.
Sometimes, yeah, sometimes you do what's out of necessity, not out of what you want to do. So, but no, so I run a boot camp. After I sold my half of the CrossFit gym in 2017, I opened a boot camp in 2019. I really enjoyed the CrossFit gym and owning that. And I felt like I wanted to get part of that back into my, back into my life. So, I started the outdoor boot camp. I have a couple of classes in the morning. I come home, I get the kids' stuff ready for the day. I get both the kids to school. My wife is a kindergarten teacher and so, she leaves a little bit earlier than when the kids need to be there. Get the kids to school. And then, I do my normal, you know, 8:00 to 5:00 role with my company. And then, realistically, outside of that, that's when city council, I guess, tasks and activities and things like that come into play. So, city council, we meet twice a month. Sometimes, some months, we meet, you know, four, five, or six times in that month because we've got budgetary planning. We've got different events that we've got to attend. But realistically, it's minimal required time invested. But there's a lot of time outside of the normal meetings or the normal get-togethers, luncheons, things like that. So, but a lot of it, I mean, is communication with the city manager, communication with the city staff about different things that are going on in the city. And so, it's been a really good experience and there's a lot of growth in our city. We're on the far east side of Houston. And we are, I think, I think our population growth is something like 30% over the last decade or something like that.
As you were talking, I just had like thought bubbles. I'm trying to contain everything in my brain so that I can remember to ask you everything that I wanted to. But I'm actually gonna go back to the CrossFit thing. Because one of the things that I was thinking about was, what is your take on the indoor fitness trend and the Peloton, the mirror? People are working out at home. CrossFit is a totally different concept. So, you know, it is community, it's sweating, throwing weights around. Accountability is much different than this current trend of getting on the bike, working out at home, and then, you know, maybe sitting down at your desk here at your house. Can you, I know this is totally outside of what we were just talking about, but when you said it, I was like, oh, I kind of wonder what he thinks about Peloton?
Yeah. So, I, so I've never used a Peloton. I do personally workout on my own quite a bit. And in the CrossFit world, that, some people may disagree, but I think that takes a special, a different mindset, a unique mindset to get to the level or to get to the threshold need to for CrossFit to be productive. I think that's what is great about CrossFit is when you work out in groups, it really pushes you to your limits, it makes you work harder. And so, for people to do that on their own, I think that takes a different mindset than some people have. Because you gotta get up, you gotta get out there, you gotta push very, very hard to get the results you want. The Peloton thing, personally, I think CrossFit or CrossFit-style workouts are the best, most efficient way for people to get fit. I started doing CrossFit in 2000, actually, I'd started doing CrossFit when I was deployed. My company commander was a huge just CrossFit fanatic. And I say fanatic, really meaning fanatic. He was crazy about CrossFit. I mean, we would watch CrossFit videos together of, this is old-school stuff, of people getting together, they would drive their van that was full of equipment and they'd just take it out in a parking lot. And they would just start working out in a parking lot doing CrossFit.
That was my first introduction too, was the military. I can remember in, because I was in from 2005 to '09 and then a year, '10 to '11. And I can remember kind of at the end, like '08 and '09, people like starting to talk about CrossFit. But like you said, it's become, it became a lifestyle.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It was a lifestyle. And they say, you know, joke, well, jokingly or not, they say, you know, how do you know if somebody does CrossFit? Well, they won't shut up about it.
They'll tell you about it a little bit.
Yeah. But, so, whenever I was introduced to it, I actually started implementing that in my platoon PT training. And so, we did CrossFit the last, I guess, the last half of the deployment. And then we continued to do CrossFit when we came back stateside. And I don't know if the guys liked it. I don't know if they didn't like it, but I loved it. And I felt like it was the best thing for them. And so that's why we kept doing it.
No, that, I, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up and, and I don't know, I don't know if I'll ever be a Peloton guy. I, I guess I understand why people do it, but certainly in this day and age of, of working remotely and being from home, I do think it pays at least for, for your mental health, not, not only your physical health, but to get outside of the house a little bit to exercise. You know, if you can in a healthy manner to be around friends and family who are working out. I, I definitely think it's critical, not only to, like I said, your physical health, but your mental health. And, and also it, obviously it means a lot to you professionally too. We, I think sometimes we talk about fitness as, as maybe just about physique or hanging out with, with your buddies or whatever it may be and looking good. But it's certainly, I think it plays a big role in, in your professional life and how you perform throughout the day and, and how you perform over, over your career. Do you have any thoughts kind of on that perspective?
Yeah, no, it definitely makes you more productive. It definitely helps clear your mind. In the environment that we are right now, being healthy, being fit. I mean, they've done studies recently with the COVID crisis that's happening and, and being fit and being healthy actually has a drastic impact on, on your ability to recover from COVID. And so, so kind of the proof is in the pudding. So it, it pays to take care of yourself. You know, and I, I've seen where people don't take care of themselves and what happens. And I've seen where people do take care of themselves and what happens. And I want to make sure that I do everything I can now, when I'm 37, to make sure that when I'm 75, I can still function. I can still do the things that I, that I want to do. I'm not limited because I didn't take care of myself when I was younger.
Yeah. So, so speaking of when you were younger, at, at the beginning of our conversation, we talked about the ability or the intention that somebody has to see through their military career to what they wanted to be in maybe five or 10 years. And you said, for the most part, maybe, maybe you didn't have kind of a, a, a four or five step plan. So now at this point, as a city council member, as somebody who's working in, in residential construction, has enjoyed their career, has started a CrossFit gym. Can you, can you kind of tell us about getting to that point, I guess? And, and why many different industries have maybe even been beneficial to you as, in a leadership role in the city there?
Yeah, I think, I think leadership, whether you're in residential construction or you run a gym or you're trying to lead or be a leader in your community. I think leadership kind of transcends what industry it's in. I think it, it, it transfers across industries. It transfers across different parts of your life. And so, so that being said, I think that my background as a platoon leader, as an infantry officer, that prepped me for being a leader down the road. And in my current role, you know, I've got a team of 18 sales consultants with the, with my role now. And, but I felt like I've always been in some type of leadership role. Whether I was a superintendent or a project manager or a sales manager or a platoon leader. I think I've just found those areas and found those specific roles and I really enjoyed those. And so it, with that being said, I think part of the reason, this is not exactly what you, you'd asked, but part of the reason that I wanted to be in city council or on city council is because I wanted to be, I wanted to lead my community. And I wanted to, I guess, be an agent of change or an agent of progress for my community. And seeing that we've had so much growth and there's so many things that are on the horizon for, for our city. I don't want to stand on the sidelines and let those things be decided by others. I want to be part of the, the process of the progress that we're making.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you said that because that's really, you know, that's, I think the crux of, of this conversation as well as so many that I'm fortunate to be a part of on this program about trying to replicate that mindset that you just talked about with other veterans is get involved in your community. Find things to be a part of and, and be that change agent. Be that good example for those in your, those in your community. And before we started recording, you talked about a, a meeting that you were just at and the excitement, I, I think if I can label that correctly, in the optimism that you feel for, for Mont Belvieu as well as the state of Texas economically, moving forward. I certainly feel the same way. I think people are excited to, to get back out there. And like I said, be, be a part of their community and, and be in community again. But, but tell us about what, what makes you excited about 2021 and, and what you're looking forward to this year?
Well, I think 2021 most, mostly is, it's not 2020.
That's true.
That's probably one of the biggest things.
Just getting through it, huh?
Yeah, exactly. But no, I, you know, I, I had a, there was an economic forecast earlier today and it talked about what is going to face our nation in 2021. What's going to face our, our state and more specifically Houston area in 2021. And there's a lot of optimism within my industry, but there's a lot of optimism, optimism generally speaking about the job market of economic growth. You know, we had, I think negative 3.6% growth in 2020. Whereas in 2021, we're projected to have, I think it's 3.3.6%. So a flip of what we, what we had last year, what we didn't have last year. So there's a lot to be excited about. I know we're still in the midst of the, the COVID crisis and the, in the COVID pandemic. But there is, we, we see the light at the end of the tunnel. And I think that's, that's the biggest thing. And, and with that being said, our, our city, Mont Belvieu, has a lot to look forward to because over the last five years, we've had a lot of plans that are now taking effect. And we've got a lot of growth and we're at, we're about 9,000 people. And we're projected to be about 30 to 35,000 by 2030 or 2035. So we've got a huge growth over the next 10, 15 years. And we've got some very big projects that are going to legitimately put us on the map where, where we haven't been before. Whenever I heard of Mont Belvieu, my wife is from here, but when I heard of Mont Belvieu, it took me probably years to remember what city she was talking about before, before we moved out here. So, but, but that's all changed now. And I think it's because we have forward-thinking leaders and forward-thinking council members who, who want the best and who want to grow our city the right way as opposed to haphazardly done.
Yeah. No, that's a, it, it's, it's incredible to be able to sit down and have this conversation after, after kind of a rough and tumble last 12 months. It's great to hear veterans who are in a leadership position such as yourself, excited about moving forward and really kind of taking the mantle along with the other leaders in their cities to, to be the example. And to really come out of this thing and hopefully in a better position than we went into it. And just to close things out, I know we have had a, a great conversation that's touched on everything from the birth of your baby boy to CrossFit and Peloton to the, the economic growth of Mont Belvieu. So I appreciate you touching on so many different conversations, so many different insights that you have from, from different industries in the, in the background that you have. But I just wanted to allow you the last word, if there's anything that we didn't get to touch on today that you would like to leave our audience with.
We, we may have touched on some of this, but it's, I just want to reiterate, reiterate some things that I've found to be successful and to help me as I transitioned out of the military and gone down into the private sector. The number one thing, and you touched on it earlier, is, is be involved. No matter, no matter what, be involved in your community. No matter, you've got to find something that interests you or maybe even something that doesn't interest you, but become involved in your community in some, in some form or fashion. For me, you know, I became involved obviously with the city council, but I've been involved with sports because our, our boys are, are involved, heavily involved in sports. And so I'm, you know, soccer and baseball and I've involved myself to make sure that I'm either on a board or that I'm coaching. But I'm, you know, ever-present because this is my community. And, and I want to make sure that I'm involved and I get to shape it the way that I, I think it needs to move in that direction. The next thing is, we've touched on this, but is education. There is absolutely no reason that, that a veteran's benefits should go untapped and unused. It's there for us. It was there for me. And it really has made a huge impact on my, on my life and on my family's life. And allowed us to, to be where we are today. Not saying that we haven't made mistakes because we have. But it's, it's really helped us get to where we are and hopefully in upward trajectory from here on. And then I would say the last thing, and, and this is a, this is difficult for military families because there is such a high rate of divorce in, in our community. You know, my wife and I, we hit 10 years in 2020 and so we've been married, thank you. And, and we've been married for 10 years and it is not a straight line of, of improvement. It's, there's ups and downs. But I think the biggest thing is, is commitment. You know, we, we as military members, we committed to our, our country. And I would say that the most important relationship you have and the one that's going to be there is, is your spouse. And so through, through the thick, through the thin, you've got to make sure that that commitment is there. And I think that hopefully resonates with military members and, and former military because I know how difficult it can be with deployments. I know how difficult it can be when you transition out from deployment or transition out of the military. But that really has helped me. And so those, those three things, I would say just involve yourself. You know, make sure you use your educational benefits. And then your, your number one relationship is really that with your spouse and, and it's, it's really helped me out.
No, that's a very sage, very advice or very good advice, Danny. I, I appreciate you bringing that up. That's something that we, we don't talk about maybe often enough on this is the importance of, of the family and being, being a leader within your family. And I know not only with your spouse, but as a city council member there and a local leader, you certainly see the impacts of the family there within the community. And it's certainly, when you have strong families, it is certainly beneficial to the, the community at large. And I appreciate you shining a light on not only that, but encouraging veterans to, to take part in their community, to serve in their community and use the benefits and resources that were afforded to them today. It's been a, it's been a really enlightening conversation and I appreciate you coming on the program today and, and talking with our audience about continued service and leadership after the military, Danny. It's been a pleasure.
Hey, thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Absolutely. On behalf of Chairman George P. Bush and our staff at the Texas Veterans Land Board, we will see you back here next Monday. Have a good one.
Follow us on Instagram at Voices of Vets, on Twitter at Voice of Veterans and on Facebook at facebook.com/voicesofveterans. To hear more, please visit voicesofveterans.org. Join us in sharing the success stories of Texas veterans. Thank you for joining us for the Next Gen Warrior Podcast.